What's going on everybody?
Good.
How are you buddy?
Good, how you doing?
I am so good and this still has five minutes, but it is still negative, which is very, very happy.
Congratulations.
Oh, I got five more minutes, but this is the best it's ever done, so we're hanging in there.
Have you been sick?
Uh, yeah, I had, I had two days where I didn't feel well. Um, last Wednesday was pretty rough. Last Thursday was eh, I felt good by Friday, but I've been locked in quarantine waiting for a negative result.
God, I'm so sorry. But will you get a negative result? What about the antibodies and stuff? Won't they linger?
The antibodies should certainly linger, I would hope.
But not the antigens or whatever?
Yeah, it's sort of like the opposite of a night out, like you want the, the antibody hangover to continue.
So Skippy, I haven't even bothered to do a follow-up test because I still have so many symptoms. I'm gonna wait till the symptoms go away, and I'm just gonna be, keep isolating until the symptoms go away.
Well, that's a good call. I've been symptom-free for a few days now and I am dying to re-enter the world as a full human. But I'm sorry, you're not still feeling well Steve.
Steve, I thought you've been symptomatic for about a year now.
Well, I had, uh, you know, I had it for eleven months and then last February when I got my second vaccination, the symptoms all went away.
Whoa.
I felt like a hundred percent. But then over Christmas time, I think everybody in our house has had this really bad cold and, and I got it the worst. I probably, I think it was about January third that I got started feeling bad. So yeah, I'm going over two weeks now and not out of it yet.
Geez man, I didn't realize that you had had like long COVID before that. I'm so sorry. What a thing.
He's going for a world record.
Oh man, I am so sorry.
I just hope this goes away and I feel a hundred percent. I don't want to go another eleven months.
No. Poor dear. How's everyone else doing?
Great.
As you know, I, I took a test Friday morning before my hut trip and luckily it came back negative or I wouldn't have gone.
Boy, glad you got the hut trip for the rest of us.
Thanks.
Where'd you go?
Uh, up to the Goodwin Green Hut. Uh, and as we were skinning up there, I recalled that I had been up there and seen the Winter School fireworks years ago. And my companion said, well, you know, it's winter school this weekend. So Saturday night we're, um, moonlight skiing and the fireworks happened.
Sweet.
They were visible.
Been a long time.
Yeah.
I would think you could see fireworks from Goodwin Green.
It, I, you know, I forgot the, it'd been so long again. I woke up the first morning because when we went in there, it was Friday afternoon, it was a ground blizzard. Uh, Saturday morning I woke up and I saw this, uh, thing off on the horizon. I was like, that looks familiar. What is it? And then it occurred to me, it's Highlands Bowl. So you can see Highlands Bowl from, uh, the Goodwin Green Hut. It's, it's really at the head of Difficult Creek.
Yeah, but I would think you would have seen the fireworks over Aspen Mountain.
Well, you're looking right down Difficult Creek into town. It's, uh, I don't know, it was mind-blowing to me, but, uh, and the Salt Mountain was visible just down the valley as well. Pretty neat.
It's like Panopticon of all things valley.
Pretty awesome place.
Where is everybody?
I'm at my house.
I believe they're here.
They're cowards, they didn't put their videos on.
I believe we have, uh,
They're incognito.
Yes, I believe we are all here. So guys, it's just a couple of minutes after four o'clock. And now we can see everybody's smiling faces and it looks as though we do have a full boat. So why don't we go ahead and get started? Um, this is the, uh, Joint City Council and BOCC work session for January eighteenth. Uh, tonight, uh, we have two items on that work session agenda. Uh, the order in which I have them here is, uh, wildland fire mitigation, uh, is up first and then a short-term rental regulations discussion is followed, uh, as our second item tonight. Uh, I believe all of you do have the ability to digitally raise your hand. Um, when I can't see everybody, of course, and we have, uh, somebody sharing the screen or presenting, uh, I can't see everybody at the same time. So if you can use a digital hand, that's great. Uh, Skippy?
No, I was just testing it.
Tori, we have, we have two members, Kelly McNicholas Curry cannot get on the link and either can Ellis Cisano. Can you have somebody on your end to send them the link? I got on fine with the link that I was sent, but.
No, I'm here Patty.
Oh, you are?
See Kelly?
I was just checking in on you. I didn't see you there.
Oh, no, I, I've been here since quarter to four. But we can't get Ellen. If somebody can send Ellen Cisano the link, that would be terrific. Thanks Kelly.
I don't see how to raise your hand.
Uh, you hit the participants list at the bottom and then when your name comes up, next to that, there's a raise the but, hand button.
Thanks Rachel.
Yeah, no, each one of these programs is different.
Uh, so we'll wait just another minute for Ellen?
She definitely needs to be on for short-term rentals, I would imagine, so.
Okay, well, our first item then will be the wildland fire mitigation. So, Ellen will join us in a moment. Let's go ahead and get started. Uh, I guess John, uh, is, is maybe gonna introduce this item.
I will kick this off. Thanks Tori. And I am going to try and, uh, share my screen. Um, uh-oh. That's, I've gotta go into my system preferences. Uh, for some reason, this will not let me share my screen.
Goodbye John, we're all rooting for you.
I know. What were we just saying about these, uh?
John, do you wanna email me and I can share it?
Yeah. Was that Kelly?
Yep.
You wanna give that a shot Kelly?
Wow, I'm getting subtitles.
Like closed captioning?
Yeah, I saw that one, uh, under captions. Unfortunately, it doesn't record it.
Well, I will go ahead and just start talking. Hopefully the screen will, uh,
There we go.
Well done Kelly. I couldn't even find where to do the permissions.
Nice.
Yeah, so tonight, uh, we've got a follow-up from the joint meeting that occurred on April twentieth. Uh, that meeting was with the Forest Service, town of Snowmass Village, Aspen and Picking County. And at that time, we were talking about, uh, wildfire risk and we also talked about, uh, mitigation projects. Following up on that conversation, um, really a lot has been happening. Kelly, would you mind advancing to the next slide? So tonight we'll, we'll be talking, um, about a number of the, those things. And, and this is not going to be inclusive of everything that's going on in the valley, but really specific to the partners that talked back on April thirtieth. So, uh, we do have Kevin Warner, our District Ranger from the White River National Forest and he will be updating us on the Roaring Fork Valley Wildlands Fuel Mitigation Strategy and also on prescribed burns that are planned for 2022. Uh, Gary Tenenbaum from Picking County Open Space and Trails will talk about the Hunter Creek, uh, fuel mitigation plan. Uh, Valerie McDonald, our Picking County Emergency Manager and myself, will update on projects that are planned for this spring in the Crystal River Valley. And then, uh, Austin Weiss from Aspen Parks and Recreation, uh, will update on an upcoming project for the, uh, Douglas Fur Bark Beetle. Um, I do believe, uh, Rick Ballantyne, I did not see him on yet. He was also planning on joining to be available to, to answer any questions. And so, uh, with that, if we could, uh, pivot to Kevin.
Good afternoon everyone and thanks John. Um, so, uh, yeah, back last April when I spoke with, uh, this group plus a few others. Um, you know, part of what I was, I think advocating for was that we really tried to think bigger, uh, picture and a little bit more strategically, uh, around, uh, you know, wildland fuels, uh, mitigation work. And so, since that time, uh, you know, I took a little bit of time to, uh, you know, really do the kind of background work and talking to all the different players in the Roaring Fork Valley to make sure that it was something that, uh, that in general folks were going to be, uh, supportive of and, and wanting to, uh, move forward with. And so, um, a couple of things to note, uh, we did have a couple of, uh, kind of initial meetings for, uh, what, we don't actually have a name for it yet, but, uh, what, right now, we're just calling the Roaring Fork Valley Wildland Fuels Collaborative. Um, and so it was a large, the, the, the great thing was that it's just the, the amount of representation from, uh, from across the valley. So, um, you know, all of the, all of the fire protection districts were represented, all of the counties, uh, were represented. Um, all the municipalities, uh, were represented, plus the different land management agencies, uh, as well. And so, and that includes, uh, folks from both Picking County and City of Aspen, uh, that were, uh, were involved in that as well. So, um, so we had a, a meeting in November. Um, really the primary goal of that was to confirm with everybody. It was a short meeting, about an hour, hour and a half, uh, to confirm with the folks that, hey, are, are we all in? Or do we think this is a valuable thing to do and is it, is it a valuable thing to do now? Um, and unanimous support. Everyone wanted to see us really trying to, uh, to move that together and do that. So, um, quick turnaround, tried to get something else going to, uh, capitalize on that momentum and had another meeting, uh, the beginning of December. And that one really was to start to dive into how we do it. When you got forty-some people on a, uh, on a Zoom call, that's tough to, uh, to have like active, integrated, um, you know, everyone able to, uh, to really engage. Uh, but we did it. We did it. We did alright. And, uh, we broke into some subcommittees to take on some, uh, some of the important things that, uh, that we thought were, were emerging. So one of them was making sure that when we're, we are, um, engaging with a diverse representation, um, in this group and especially from our Latino community. So, um, you know, many times, uh, you know, it, it's a little, it, it's a, it's an afterthought or, or we're just not doing as good of a job as we could be doing to engage our Latino community in, in these types of efforts. And so, we're, we've got a subcommittee that's starting to work on that and bringing, uh, bringing the community into that. So, um, we also broke off into a subcommittee that looked at the, um, the geographic scope. There were some questions of like, well, do, what is the Roaring Fork Valley and what do we use the, as the boundaries and such for that? Um, and so, um, right now, uh, we are looking at and we'll, you know, when the next time the group gets together, we'll confirm this, but the most likely is that we'd be looking at, uh, the watershed boundaries of the Roaring Fork, uh, Valley, which is, is pretty good size. Um, but then just a little bit in addition to that being the, um, the Fire Protection District of Glenwood Springs. Cause it, the, the, it actually stops, the Roaring Fork Valley, if you're using watershed boundaries, stops when you hit, uh, hit the Colorado River. And, um, integrating Glenwood Springs into this in, uh, in a really meaningful way, uh, was important to the group. So expanding that just a little bit around in there. Excuse me. And then formalizing the group, um, that's the other subcommittee and, uh, trying to figure out, do we wanna do an MOU? Is this something that a nonprofit needs to be, um, started? There's so many different ways that these types of things have been done in different places. So, um, part of what, we are, uh, getting some help from a group called Fire Adapted Colorado. Um, I've been working mainly with, um, the Fire Mitigation Manager in Eagle County, um, as part of this group to help, uh, to get Fire Adapted Colorado, uh, engaged with us and help us as a group to do this and to, to hopefully do it right from the beginning. Excuse me. Um, and so, uh, a few things that have come out of it, um, so far, um, some cross-boundary project sharing. So we took some time out of our last meeting to say, hey, what's everybody doing now that you're already doing? That maybe, um, it could be a better project if you had, you know, help from the Forest Service or help from, you know, um, you know, Aspen Fire or whatever it happens to be. Uh, one of the things that's coming out of that, um, you know, Valerie and John will talk more about this crystal, this work in the Crystal River. But, uh, at the upper parts of the Crystal River, um, watershed, it turns into Gunnison County and, um, some of these projects there. Uh, so, uh, the Forest Service is now sitting down with Gunnison County Marble and Carbonell Fire to see if there's some opportunities there to, um, to work together on some of the projects that are a little further up in the valley than the ones that, uh, uh, Picking County and the Forest Service and Carbonell Fire are partnering on now. So. But you'll hear more about that in a little bit. Uh, we're also, um, really, you know, the focus there is, how do we work together as a group to identify the most important areas for mitigation treatments? And then try to figure out how to put the right things in place to actually be able to do that. So, um, let's see, so soon, those are the things that we'll be, we'll be continuing to work on. I think it's a great group. We've got a lot of, uh, um, folks who are strongly committed to doing this. Uh, folks that are willing to put in, um, financial help if needed and when we figure that part out. Um, and then I really do think that, uh, by doing this, we'll be able to set our valley up for success in competing for some of the money that's gonna be coming out of this, uh, uh, this infrastructure bill. Once that starts to like formalize and, and where that's coming and how to compete for that, I think this will, will truly help with that. Um, Kelly, if you don't mind, uh, moving on to the next one, that'd be great. Alright, so, uh, some of the upcoming stuff on the, on Forest Service lands anyway. Um, I will talk about, um, we've got three prescribed fires in Picking County. Uh, we've got two in Eagle County that I just thought I would mention, so you guys knew what was going on in the valley. And then, uh, a project that I wanted to talk just a little bit more about, um, that's kind of an out-year project in Picking County as well. Um, I'll talk about Collins Creek and Broderidge Creek and then Gary's going to primarily talk about the Hunter Creek work there. Um, and let's see, the other thing that just, uh, before we go on to talk about specifics about this, just so everyone, it's, it's rare that we ever, even though we've got, you know, five different projects on here right now, it's rare that we ever get to actually implement all five of those if we've got them in place. Um, there's staffing issues that come to, come to, um, fruition. There's on-the-ground conditions that just may, that one of these just may not, uh, be ripe for, uh, this coming spring. Um, so just wanna make sure everybody knows that the reason we have five on here is that it gives us a lot of flexibility and we can move around and make sure that we get as much, uh, of these treatments on the landscape as possible, uh, when working with those on-the-ground conditions as well as, uh, potential staffing limitations and those types of things. So. And also, um, you know, these are the best bang for your buck as far as total, um, amount of acres that, uh, you might be able to accomplish. Um, uh, but they're still expensive. Uh, so to put that into perspective, it's about fifteen thousand dollars or so to pay for a helicopter for, uh, you know, for most of the day to be able to, uh, to conduct one of these, uh, one of these burdens. Um, and let me just check in with folks. Uh, do you want me to just kinda keep rolling through here? I do see, uh, a hand up. I can answer questions through, uh, along the way, but I wanna make sure I work with whatever your format is.
I, I, I think a mix there is, it'd be great Kevin. I do see a hand up from Skippy right now. I think he's got a question about what you just said. Skippy?
I do. I just, um, I thank you, uh, so much Kevin for all this. Uh, I just wanna make sure that I'm clearly understanding. So on the previous slide, when, when you described treatments, um, you're specifically referring to prescribed fires, which maybe I know of as like a controlled burn. But can you kind of describe what exactly a prescribed fire is and, and, and what it isn't? So that, uh, at least I understand what we're talking about.
No, absolutely. Thanks Skippy. Uh, sometimes, uh, people, uh, like myself, we, we gloss over that stuff and we just keep on moving, uh, thinking that everybody's on the same page. So I appreciate it. Um, Kelly, if you don't mind, I don't know that we really need to go back to the next one. If, uh, you know how to use that program and go back, it'd be great. If not, don't worry about it. Um, but, um, so, uh, so, it's not just prescribed fire. So yes, that's what, uh, when you say what you think of as a controlled burn, uh, prescribed fire, same thing basically. But the, that's not the only type of treatment that you could see that would be, uh, helpful for, uh, wildland fuel mitigation. So a little further on in this presentation, uh, Valerie and John are gonna talk to you about some, uh, some work that was done last year as well as some work that's under contract to be done soon. And that's, uh, being done with what's called a masticator. So this masticator is a piece of heavy equipment, um, that, uh, that goes around and chews up basically, uh, oak brush primarily. There's other types of brush it can get into, but it can't get the big trees, uh, but it can get oak brush and mountain shrub communities and things like that. So, and it chews those up and it, uh, puts that into kind of a mosaic pattern, um, and does that. There's also, uh, options for what we call hand treatments. Um, and so hand treatments are usually, um, uh, individuals with chainsaws primarily, um, going out there and cutting down brush, um, in strategic, strategic ways that then, um, either has to be removed, uh, to actually decrease that, the fuel bed or can be piled and burned at a later time. So, um, those are the three primary ways. There's other ways that, uh, these things can be done as well, but, uh, that probably hits on the big ones anyway.
Got it. So I would be correct in understanding that a treatment is, um, a targeted approach to remove fuel from key areas that could impinge on areas we don't want to burn. Uh, and that there are various scales at which that's done from the hand to the machine to, uh, prescribed fire, which is sort of the, the biggest tool. Is that fair?
Yep. And it's probably fair. It's also fair to say that hand treatments are the most expensive in general. Mastication's the next mo, next most and, uh, your least expensive, again, in general, is the, uh, is the prescribed fire.
Got it. Makes sense. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no, great. Um, alright, so moving on, uh, and I think we can advance two slides. Yep. So Collins Creek. You can see that Collins Creek here is east of Woody Creek. Um, you can see the stuff that's in kind of a pink, uh, salmon red color. Those are the areas that, uh, we would be looking to treat. Now, we treated in this area, we had, we conducted a prescribed fire, um, primarily in unit two and I believe a little bit of unit one, uh, last May. Um, so the fire, the, the picture that was in the last slide was actually from Collin, the Collins Creek burn from, uh, prescribed fire from last year. So these are things that we're looking at, uh, accomplishing this coming, uh, spring. Um, and so units one, two, uh, sorry, one, three and four would be our target areas. Rarely do we burn all of what you see in there. It really depends on the, the conditions. So it's about two thousand, maybe a little bit more acres. And it really, some of it depends on the, uh, the smoke permits that we can get from the state as well. So, um, Kelly, if you don't mind moving to the next one, be great. Alright, Broderidge Creek. So we're back in the Crystal, um, Valley. So this is in Picking County, um, and, uh, Broderidge Creek is just to the west of, uh, the little hamlet of Redstone and, um, and it's also about two thousand acres or so. We burned maybe three or four years ago in here, um, some of the brush, it didn't take really well because the conditions were a little too moist. Uh, but it's also primarily oak brush. There's some out, Aspen, another mountain shrub in there. And then be another, uh, prescribed fire that we'd be looking at conducting coming up this, um, this spring. And if we move to the next one, I believe this is where Gary's gonna take over.
Thanks Kevin. Hi everyone. So Hunter Creek, this is right on everyone's doorstep in Aspen. So, you know, a lot of the biggest question that we usually get on this one is, we burned this in 2016. Why are we doing this again? And so, you know, when we do prescribed fire, prescribed fire is not a one and done thing. Plus, you know, the weather conditions really dictate what you can do and how, how good the fire was for the land. And so when we did it in 2016, it was an incredible partnership between the city and the county. We also had ACES. We had Aspen Fire and, and Wilderness Workshop and Roaring Fork Mountain Bike Association. We had this incredible partnership, put together a huge public outreach for it because we kinda knew that this would definitely get some people's attention when, uh, and this was before the big fire in, you know, Lake Christine and stuff. So we were, we were definitely prepared for a lot of questions. Amazingly, I guess we did a good enough job that we didn't really get much. But it also was because the fire, you know, we did a good job in some areas. We did post-monitoring of the areas and what this was supposed to do was really, you know, this is a big area of Aspen and as everyone knows, Aspen needs some type of change to, uh, stimulate growth. And so fire is the best thing for it. And in certain areas, it did great. And, but in, in the reality is, is we had about eighteen, about fifteen hundred to eighteen hundred acres that we could potentially burn. Only nine hundred burned and it was definitely different levels of severity. So, um, you know, it's five years and there's, there's an opportunity to potentially go back there and hit specifically the areas that weren't hit that hard the first time with fire and see if we can get some better regeneration. This also adds a little bit age diversity. You know, a lot of our forests are, you know, all, you know, nothing's really burned or changed in well over a hundred years. And so, you know, trying to get some better age diversity in there with different fire intervals at different times will be really critical. Again, this is gonna be a big partnership with the city, county, Aspen Fire, ACES. And so, you know, we're, we're, we're working with the Forest Service. They've been great partners. Um, I'm shocked that they wanna go back in here. Putting fire next to the City of Aspen is, is a daunting, um, proposition sometimes. But, you know, these guys have done a really great job and they picked the right weather window and they were very efficient the first time. I mean, I, I bet you most people in Aspen had no idea there was even a fire. They only got like five calls to nine-one-one. So I think this time they'll, they'll continue to do the same and hopefully we can hit those areas. And so I'll stop now if you guys have questions on that. Um, probably one question is timing. Uh, I think we did it last time in April. It was early April, so that would probably be the timing again. And, uh, it could be up to early May. It depends on, you know, if we continue to get snow. We need a snowpack, um, in the upper areas where you see the black lines. We need that snowpack so the fire can run right into that snow. Um, and, and usually then, you know, within a day or two, it could be reopened to recreation and people going back in there. Any questions? Cool. And then this will go into Kevin's next. Uh, do you have the Sunnyside slide ready to go? And, uh, yeah, this, this, this is a bigger conversation that we didn't wanna tackle right away. Um, this is, you know, this is, this includes this Hunter Creek section, but it also goes all the way out towards the Sunnyside Trail. It goes behind, um, the homes on Red Mountain. You know, a lot of those areas are oak brush and service berry. And, you know, the, and most of those areas are really old oak brush and service berry. Oak brush and service berry usually, you know, in areas that humans let go, uh, let natural fires and disturbance happen, you know, twelve to fifty years is kind of the normal amount of time before an oak area will burn. And it provides, you know, not only while, like as the oak and especially the oak and the service berry get older, they get, you know, they start to die off at the tops. they get, you know, they start to die off at the tops, and that actually creates a bigger fire load. And so the goal here would be to really help reduce that, but also provide a better wildlife habitat. The wildlife needs this mosaic of old growth and younger growth. Right now we have a lot of old growth. We don't have a ton of younger growth. This also might be, you know, maybe this is not necessarily a, a full-on, um, fire. This could be more masticator or actually crews going up and and doing it. But, um, this is definitely one of those where there's, there's many different jurisdictions up there. This is the Forest Service, the county, the city, and it would be, you know, a multi-jurisdiction effort that will most likely take, you know, it it's not, I, I would be shocked if we came back in twenty twenty-three and we're ready for this, but, you know, this is definitely something that we would like to continue the discussion on. Because it's an area that really is, you know, kind of primed for, uh, uh, introduction of some type of disturbance, you know, for wildlife and for wild, and and wildland fuel reduction.
We've got a couple of questions for you there, Gary, if you don't mind. I've got Steve Chow and then Rachel. Steve?
So Gary, it looks like this Sunnyside one is more of the area I was thinking about on the previous Smuggler Mountain and Hunter Creek thing. You did a lot of mastication and hand, you know, mechanical treatment, uh, in this area before. And I don't know if you did any burning in this Sunnyside area before, but then the most of the burning was up in Hunter Creek. So is that kind of the plan again to do mostly mechanical stuff and not so much burning in this low, lower area closer to the city?
Well, and Steve, thank you for that because you're right. Um, there was a, we had about a thirty to fifty acre area right next to the homes in Hunter Creek. We kind of, we did that with, uh, hand crews. And, and yes, that that was more on the, if you're looking at the map, it's more on the right side in the yellow area. And so, yes, we're going to need to retreat that. Uh, we're not going to probably burn all the way through to there. Um, but because we treated that in the past, it actually provides a very good fire break, you know, for our prescribed fires in that area. But the other areas, um, I don't know, Kevin, what do you think?
Yeah, so, uh, just to make sure we're all talking about the same things. The red outlined areas is the Hunter Creek area that we were just talking about on the previous slide. And the yellow outlined areas are this, uh, this Sunnyside part. And then there's some gray areas that are in between there that are included in the Hunter Creek, um, decision notice that was signed. Um, but that haven't been, uh, treated in the same way. Like Gary said, there's thirty acres here, uh, there's of of some mechanical. I think there was a little mastication in there as well, if I understood correctly, but there's been some treatments in there, but there's opportunity for more. Um, and so, but, um, in looking at that, my best guess, and that's when I, if you look at the bullets about needs, um, for that yellow area, um, there's some needs that we still need to, uh, to to take care of. So we need to do some wildlife surveys, some ARKE surveys, noxious weed surveys to make sure that we understand the right thing to do, uh, when we do get there. And I agree with Gary. I don't think this is twenty twenty-three. I think this is work that we do in this, we do in probably earliest case, today, spring of twenty twenty-four. Although, if we were able to look at this and find that there were areas that need to be treated through either mechanical or mastication. So mechanic, or, let's, sorry, let me, let me say hand treatments or mastication or something like that to be able to, um, facilitate a prescribed fire in the future. Um, then I could see the potential for some of that possibly happening in twenty twenty-three, setting us up for something else, uh, with some fire, um, possibly in twenty twenty-four. But really, we need to get our people out there to look at this and look at the the slopes and the soils and all those things. Uh, the fuel loading, everything, to be able to make some of those recommendations to the Hunter Smuggler Collaborative Group, um, to be able to decide to to help that group make some decisions on, okay, how do we go about doing this? And so that's some of the work that we're hoping to see over, uh, over the next year or so.
Thank you for that. Uh, I've got Rachel and then Ward.
Yes, um, thank you all, um, for the presentation and for the work that's gone on since the last time we all got together on this topic. I appreciate that very much. Um, we all, I think, are very painfully aware of what just happened down in Boulder County and Louisville and Superior, um, where there was no Forest Service land at all involved. Uh, and, uh, what I'd like to say is that during the Colorado Municipal League Conference this last September, I attended the fire presentation that Colorado's Fire Chief and Dan Gibbs, uh, Director of, um, Department of Natural Resources, put together. And they really were very detailed about the changing nature of fire in Colorado. Uh, December fires, um, fires that burn through winter and the speed at which they are overtaking these areas. It it was frankly quite terrifying, but, uh, it's our new reality. And what I'm getting at is I I look at Red Mountain and I'm very concerned about it, whether it's Sunnyside Trail side or or Hunter Creek side. Um, and that potential to to have a fire with, uh, on private property, uh, on on the HOAs, not taking this threat seriously enough. And as we know, there's only one road in and one road out, you know, the same road. Uh, and I I just see evacuation in that area as being incredibly challenging. And what I'd like to know, and perhaps it's coming further in this presentation, but how can we get the HOAs to start taking the fuel mitigation seriously within their private properties? And I I I'm just really concerned about that, and I'd love to see us get some of those slides and some of that really detailed information about how quickly these fires are spreading, how how, um, how out of control they are, even though people kind of look up and see greenery and think, oh, it's green. It's like, no, it's very dry. Um, so I I won't go on any further, but I think that all this work is really going to come down to not if we don't have the private property owners also taking these issues very seriously and, um, starting mitigation work on on all of the the overgrown brush, uh, going up, up, uh, before you hit the Forest Service land. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Rachel. And, uh, so if you, if if you take a look at the slide, the best, uh, the 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 last point is probably the one that, uh, um, that you're mainly, uh, talking about, this best if done cross-boundary. And so when I think about this project, um, and when we've spoken, so the the collaborative group includes, um, the folks from the Aspen Fire Protection District. Um, when, uh, Rick and his staff have talked about this project with us, um, that's what we've talked about. We've talked about how that 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 work also needs to be coming down or should be. It would be best, like you said, like, yes, it's going to be, it'd be better if we had some treatments up above there on Forest Service land or or other lands. But it would be best if it came all the way down into those HOAs and other places. And so, um, I anticipate, and, uh, I think Gary could attest to this as well, that that's, that's our goal. Um, it's, it it makes it, um, more challenging in a lot of ways to, uh, to work with HOAs and other things. Um, but, uh, you know, relying on the Fire Protection District, relying on the State Forest Service and the city's, uh, foresters, um, I think we can do a good job of reaching out to those groups. And, you know, to be real blunt and honest, uh, you know, those things that are happening in other places, um, right now are helping us in that, uh, that effort as well.
Hey, this is Rick with Aspen Fire. Could I join in conversation for a second?
All right, Rick.
Yeah, just while, just speaking to what Kevin said, that's one item or one area that we're looking at strongly. In fact, right before this meeting, I was on a meeting with several people from HOAs, a couple of different HOAs up on Red Mountain. And kind of what, kind of what Kevin said is, we're kind of working from the inside out while they're working from the outside in. We're trying to really educate our HOAs and our homeowners and our citizens, uh, in in directly affected, that could be directly affected by this and the way, to really get, to really get involved. In fact, we're, we're in the early stages of putting together a sort of a, a citizen collaborative board, our, our committee that can kind of, we can, we can share ideas with them, they can share ideas with their friends. And we've just recently brought on a person, Ally Hager, she's on the line as well, to help with that efforts to to facilitate, uh, HOA meetings, facilitate meetings with with stakeholders, to really show the importance. And actually, one thing Kevin said earlier is, all this takes money, and that's one thing we're trying to 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 put together as well. It's not just going to all come from the city, it's not going to come from the county, it's not going to come from the Forest Service or Fire District. We're really looking at putting together, we 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 call it a wildfire community action fund, which we're heading up, uh, which Ally's heading up as her title is Director of Community Wildfire Resistance for our district. So that's, that's where we're working at in our reference right now in collaboration with with a lot of other people. So, uh, we'll see how that goes.
Thank you, chief. Uh, Ward?
Yeah, thank you for for your efforts and the, um, information you're giving here. Uh, just had a question on the archaeological, uh, survey, surveys. I'm assuming that's for for you tribe, and once that's done, it doesn't have to be done again? Is that true?
Yeah, that's, uh, that's generally correct, that, um, um, we do surveys and there is some, uh, um, kind of, at 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 certain elevations, if, or sorry, certain, um, gradients, if it's above like say thirty percent grade or something like that, we don't normally have to do as much survey because they can say, eh, most likely it wasn't used by, uh, by by folks in, uh, as far as like a landing pad or somewhere where you'd find those things. So there's some other work that goes on to just making sure we're surveying the the most, uh, uh, the most likely, uh, locations.
Uh, once, once that's done, next time you have a prescribed burn in this area, you don't have to do that again?
Generally, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Got another, uh, hand up? Greg?
Okay, thank you, um, and thank you for the presentation. Um, getting back to the points Rick just made, um, I know this has been tried before in the homeowner areas, and certainly in Red Mountain and other places, pardon me. Um, and and what it came down to was a certain, uh, uh, resistance, and I think it had to do with legal issues, liability issues. Um, there was an anecdote from Marty Flug when he was the head of the Homeowners Association so many years ago, saying that when he proposed they do fire mitigation, he received a lot of threatened threats for lawsuits. And and so we have a, we have a legal issue. I think we have homeowners and 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 their attorneys, some of whom are on this call, no doubt, who are concerned about liability or assuming liability or, uh, the legal consequences of doing something like this. And I, what I want to know is, um, do we have the resources to understand this situation and and be able to work our way through it? Because I think going into any HOA, we're going to run up against issues like this. And I I'm naive enough, I I better stop talking about it now, but I'm hoping we can hear from people who have been looking into this. Thanks.
Hey, Greg, this is Rick. If I could answer part of that at least. Um, the conversation that we've had has been, I think, less about lib, legal liabilities than it was. Well, they're afraid we're going to come in and clear cut their their yards or clear cut their views. I think what we're hoping to do in in partnership with with Kevin and others is just show people what a true, uh, project is going to look like. It's not ugly, it's not clear cutting, it's actually improving the views, improving the 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 surrounding, both for, both for wildfire mitigation and also for wildlife and 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 river conservation. So I I haven't heard a lot about, you know, threatening us to sue us because we're going to do X, Y, or Z. It's more about they're afraid what they're, what what's going to look like. So hopefully we can get some good projects out there that show people, hey, this really looks pretty damn good.
Right. Thanks, Rick.
And so far, uh, the people I've talked to, uh, uh, thus far have been pretty, pretty positive on trying to help. But again, it's early.
Thank you. Uh, Kevin, back to you.
Uh, I'm done, uh, unless people have other questions. Uh, and I believe from there it moves on to, if I recall correctly, uh, John and Valerie.
Yeah, thank you, Kevin, and, uh, thank you, Kelly, for advancing the slide. So, um, recognizing that there are a number of opportunities, uh, out there to work with large property owners, uh, Forest Service, Open Space and Trails, uh, following the, uh, April thirtieth joint meeting. Uh, the Board of Commissioners did budget, uh, three hundred thousand dollars over three years um, to partner on wildland fuel reduction, uh, projects. And we talked a lot about the same things that that we're talking about here. You know, there's, uh, limited capacity, um, amongst individual jurisdictions to administer complex projects on their own. So we need to partner, um, and and we need to bring resources to the table, uh, together. And and I think you've, uh, heard some examples of that already. We're going to give a few more. Um, we also acknowledge the difficulty of coordinating with numerous private property owners to agree on fuel reduction projects. This has been, uh, an ongoing discussion. I really applaud. I I do think we've got a more, um, robust conversation and, uh, going on now with the efforts of regional planning efforts, um, like, uh, Rick has has already talked about, uh, to to try and bring private property owners to the table. But it is going to take time, uh, to work through those complex issues. And so we saw an opportunity while those conversations are happening, uh, to be able to work with our large property owners, uh, in the wildland, uh, wild urban, uh, interface. And that's mostly really the Forest Service and our Open Space and Trails programs to quickly implement fuel reductions projects while we're working to, working through these more complex challenges, um, to to try and capture our our private, um, property owners also. Um, to some examples, uh, we, we were able to work with Kevin and his team uh, at the Forest Service to identi- identify some high priority fuel reductions projects that had already gone through the environmental clearances, um, were really shovel-ready, um, but were lacking the staff resources and, uh, the funding to implement. As Kevin said, that can be a challenge for getting projects on the ground. And so, um, we did step in with a MOU. And, um, Kelly, if you wouldn't mind advancing the slide, and I am going to pivot to Valerie McDonald to talk about the projects that we'll be implementing this spring.
Hello, everyone. I'm Valerie McDonald, Picken County Emergency Manager. And I apologize, I have tech issues and I'm not able to get on camera, but as long as you can hear me. Um, a lot, some of this will be redundant with what John just laid out. But at our meeting in April, we discussed a strategic partnership between the US Forest Service and the county to accomplish meaningful wildfire mitigation work on federal land in wildland urban interface areas. So essentially areas where the forest meets homes. And we'd like to update you on the progress that we've made since April. Um, as noted at the April meeting, we've tried to engage the public to do work on their private land with limited success. That has led us to working with the feds since they own eighty three percent of the land in Picken County. It's the most expeditious and effective way to get fire mitigation work completed in the county. We're essentially working with the Forest Service to identify shovel-ready projects, as John said, in the wildland urban interface areas on property owned by the Forest Service. Areas where the Forest Service has already performed their surveys and environmental assessments, so the projects are shovel-ready, but are basically lacking the necessary funds to complete the work. This is where the partnership comes in. The US Forest Service has identified many projects in the Crystal Valley. Um, in the spring, we did complete the Swiss Village Fire Mitigation Project. It was a mechanical treatment using a masticator. And, Gippy, to your question, picture a big boulder, bulldozer with a grinder on the end of it. And this is really important here. What's, what are we trying to do here? The intent is to reduce the fuel load and create a break in continuous fuels, which can- The intent is to reduce the fuel load and create a break in continuous fuels, which can reduce wildfire intensity. And give firefighters places to more safely engage the fire. Approximately thirty acres were treated adjacent to the Swiss Village subdivision. It's a good example of the partnership formed between the county, Carbondale Fire and the Forest Service. And really importantly, because we know how hard this is to do with the homeowners of the uh of the of the Swiss Village Homeowners Association. The work was performed at Forest Service land and it was funded by Picken County Forest Service, Carbondale Fire. And the HOA also funded work on their side of the jurisdictional boundary. It was a true partnership. So since the meeting in April, when the B O C C approved funding to continue the work. The county has worked with the Forest Service, again, Carbondale Fire, on the Redstone project. We've developed, we you know, we quickly, these things take time, developed a scope of work. Um a potential contractor tour was conducted, county sent out a trust for proposal. And the contract was awarded to Western Vegetation Management. Work will commence in the spring as soon as weather and conditions are conducive. It's a hundred and thirty acre mastication project north of Redstone. The cost of the project is approximately sixty two thousand dollars. Forest Service and Carbondale Fire are both contributing ten K each and the county's paying the balance. It's it's a true partnership. And just to clarify, because we don't want to give anyone a false sense of security. There's no guarantee that these mitigation projects will stop a wildfire. Uh to Rachel's point, we all watched in horror as the fire in Boulder destroyed over a hundred thousand, over a thousand homes. When it's hot, dry and windy, some fires cannot be stopped and people just need to get out of the way quickly. By reducing and breaking up the continuous fuels, at the very least, it gives the residents of the historic town of Redstone a fighting. A fighting chance to evacuate safely. It could buy the residents valuable time and truly, truly, if you listen to Fire Chief Rob going up there, truly has the potential to save many lives. And added benefit to this project is that Holy Cross has a utility line through the mitigation area. That serves a hundred and thirty-two homes in Redstone, so this work will also help to protect the critical critical infrastructure. The the uh the other topic that we discussed at the April meeting was the importance of community outreach and education. Uh the county launched a multimedia wildfire preparedness campaign last spring, working with a local. Marketing company, ninety thousand dollars was spent last summer. Most of the funding came from a foundation grant, Roaring Fork Fire, that Roaring Fork Fire received. Uh the the remainder was paid by Picken County and the campaign was run out of the Picken County Emergency Management Office. Um just to ensure consistent messaging and was amplified by all municipalities and most public safety agency. Wildfire preparedness information is out in the community, there it was everywhere, TV, radio, newspaper, banners, banners everywhere, social media. Seventy foot high roll-up banners at the airport, you could not get into the airport without tripping over that fire restriction banner. Um laminated flyers, um fire departments were all are always available to give residents free wildfire risk assessments on their homes. And I have to say, it worked, um the public did not start a fire. Um and when you think that ninety percent of wildfires are caused by people, that it it was successful. Um I know I sound like a broken record, but I always take this opportunity. Uh to say this, the work that public safety agencies perform is a partnership with the public. We do our part on emergency preparedness and response and the public also needs to do their part. To mitigate their risk by clearing defensive space, hardening their home, meaning using fire resistant material. And most importantly, having an evacuation plan so they can take fast action during a wildfire. I I know this presentation is about some of the work that we're doing, government, but. I would ask all citizens what they have personally done to prepare for wildfire. Unequivocally, government alone can't fix this problem. So going forward with Commissioner's support, we will continue to work with the Forest Service and other partners to identify meaningful mitigation projects and get the work done. I'm happy to take questions, thank you.
Tori, I know we're running out of time, we do have one more project, uh the Douglas fur bark beetle project uh that Austin was gonna present.
Sounds good, I don't see any questions at this time, uh Greg perhaps, Greg?
Yeah, sorry, thank you, um Tori, I'll be quick. Uh the question I would have for Valerie perhaps, um or maybe one of our uh Rangers or Kevin. Is under what circumstances d- does the county, if they have it, if they have power at all? Do they have any sort of police power to go in and remove a hazard? Does does there have to be a wildfire approaching before something like that happens?
Greg, that may be one we wanna bring to our attorney's office.
Is that an acceptable answer for you, Greg?
Um uh well, I'm content to leave it, there was a little bit of, a little bit brief. I was hoping that uh Rick or Kevin or, you know, whoever else might be on the call would would weigh in, but if you don't, I understand. And maybe that's an attorney's office, but it seems to me that uh in in, you know, when you look at the the threat. Uh and the significance of 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 a possible ability of losing human life and property. Um it seems to me that there would be certain powers for creating fire breaks or doing, you know, mitigation in advance of the threat. Thank you.
Yeah, and Greg, I do think we, each jurisdiction has some powers, for example, through land use codes and requirements. That some jurisdictions have implemented, um but that that's probably a whole another conversation uh that that for us to have. With that, uh Austin?
Kelly's waving her hand, Tori.
Yeah, Greg, what was that?
Kelly is waving at you.
I've got Steve Child.
So so let me weigh in real quickly, uh two two other tactics that haven't been talked about. About one would be livestock grazing. Merritt Linky, a Grand County Commissioner, um showed pictures of a pasture that his cattle had grazed. That actually stopped the East Troublesome Fire in that in that vicinity. Because the the cattle had eaten up the grass and so it didn't turn into a grass fire going across this big meadow area. Uh we don't have nearly as many livestock in Picken County as we used to, so there's. I think there's a lot more fuel just from the grass on the ground that doesn't get eaten up uh to feed fires. And then the second tactic would be for homeowners to harden their homes to make them more fire resistant. Through various techniques and I I think doing publicity on. What a homeowner can do to harden their home would be a worthwhile endeavor for us to undertake. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. We'll move on to our last topic in this agenda item, so uh Austin, if you are prepared.
Uh Tori, I think Kelly's had her hand up and you kind of passed over her because she's being such a good staff person over there.
I guess it's because she's sharing her screen, I cannot see her hand up. Uh Kelly, go right ahead.
Sorry, I couldn't figure out how to unmute while sharing, um. Yeah, I wonder, I think a takeaway from this would be great if if we could get information from our staffs about our building. And and um land use codes and whether we are meeting the best practices for wildfire prevention these days. It's like something for us to do out of this update.
That kind of dovetails a little bit with what Steve was just talking about, kind of acquainting with what what it would take for uh private citizens to harden their homes. Um I think that request was heard then. Francie?
I really appreciate what Steve said about pasturing grasslands because when fire moves across grasslands that are three feet tall. It's really devastating, but when they hit grasslands that are six inches tall, they it stops in its tracks. So I do think that's a tool we have in our belt that we haven't really utilized. I know in my neighborhood here on Stark Mesa, I've tried to convince our two neighbors to let us put our horses out there. Or the dislanded cows or whatever it takes because when I see our place surrounded by these fields of grass, it's pretty terrifying in a dry year. So thank you, Steve, for bringing that up and I I just want to put an exclamation point after that.
Thank you. Then if there's no other hands that I'm not seeing at this time, we'll try to move to the last part of this agenda item.
Hi, everyone, uh I'm Austin Weiss, I'm the Parks and Rec Director for the City of Aspen and it's nice to see everyone this evening. Um we wanted to just uh, let's see, talk briefly here about a project that we're. Um undertaking over the next couple of months here up on the flanks of Aspen Mountain. With me tonight, I've got Matt Kuhn, the Parks and Open Space Director, and John Spees, our Natural Resource and Open Space Manager. Um and I guess more than anything else, this highlights the importance of of these partnerships that we've developed over the years. And uh a- as we have started to see the influx of the Douglas fir beetle, like we did with the the pine beetle up on Smuggler Mountain. Um we can uh phone in, you know, on our speed dial and get those partners together and and react quite quickly. And with that, what I'd like to do this evening is turn this over to John Spees, our project manager here, and let him describe this this uh project. Obviously, uh the importance is twofold, yes, there's an aesthetic aspect to dead trees on our hillsides, but more importantly. The the wildfire fuel problems with those dead trees, so with that, I'm gonna turn it over to John.
Thank you, Austin, and uh good evening, everybody. Um I will uh be brief here, but I wanted to give you an update on a project that we have embarked. Uh on with the Douglas fur bark beetle. So a little background, the Doug the Doug fir bark beetle is a native uh insect. Um but as uh our trees become stressed as a result of drought. Um we s- we can see these insects beginning to take hold in our forest, establish a foothold. And ultimately, if conditions are right, meaning the str- the the trees are stressed enough, they can. It can ultimately lead to um the death of of groups of trees. And usually what you see is is small groups of trees, five to ten uh trees will will uh will go red and dead, as they say. Um and uh it doesn't mean that the the outbreak is over, but it means that uh it's sort of hit that one group of trees and is potentially gonna move on. Uh next slide. So I imagine some of you, if not all of you, have probably seen some of the impacts. Um this picture uh came out of an aerial uh survey from twenty twenty. And um the the indicated areas there are some of these uh groups of dead Douglas fir trees. Um that's right here on the ute. Uh if you travel up uh the frying pan drainage, you the damage is much more extensive. Um and some of the mappings we've seen, it's really gained a strong foothold in that area. Um but but this this photo right here, I think it does a really nice job of showing some of those local areas of impact right adjacent to to Aspen on the ute. Next slide. So early or early in the fall or late in the summer, depending on how you look at it. Um the City of Aspen brought together a group of partners and as A- as Austin said, it was uh it was a quick call to to generate this list. Um including the Colorado State Forest Service, ACES, uh Aspen Fire Protection District, um Aspen Skiing Company. US Forest Service, Picken County, um and the Picken County Open Space and Trails Group. And the the first order of business was uh trying to understand uh what areas uh would should be the priority for for treatment. And we we outlined a a long laundry list, um and there are, you know, we've we've put up four here today. Uh fire mitigation, uh the view plane from town, recreational safety and an identification of resilient landscapes. And you know, from this list, we then went back to uh the Colorado State Forest Service. And began to generate uh some mapping where we thought we could have an impact. Um next slide, please. So this mapping here is uh I I start off by saying it's preliminary, um I'd say it still needs some refinement. But what you what you're seeing there is approximately five hundred and sixty acres of forest. Um where we would seek uh some sort of treatment um within those Douglas fir stands. And a little background on the on the origin of the mapping, so. Um the Forest Service provided us with the mappings of where species are on the mountain. And so that becomes the first layer. And then we begin to cross-reference in ownership of those lands. And then probably more importantly, or most importantly, you can see some dots there that are other colors. So we have that large blue one that is uh over on the right-hand side of the screen and we have some smaller ones. That you can see uh right in the center on the ute. And those indicate uh areas that were surveyed to have a beetle infestation. So you can see those small dots, um and without treatment, they can grow bigger and bigger year after year. Particularly when the when the trees are under stress, uh as they have been for the last several years. So five hundred and sixty acres, um doing the math on that, it's a it's approximately seventy thousand dollars uh worth of cost per year. Um and that would be shared across the partners uh that we identified earlier. And um it's it's not necessarily just a one-year treatment. Um a lot of it comes from the analysis that we that we would uh we would do in the fall following that treatment. Uh next slide. So what exactly is it? Uh this is a pheromone treatment process. Um you may have been out in the woods and seen packets hanging from trees and wondered exactly what those are. Uh in for different pests, there are different uh pheromones that you can assemble and put in these packets. And basically what it is, is an anti-aggregation uh pheromone. So it indicates that uh in this case, that uh that beetles uh are not gonna be attracted to this area. So it pushes them out of that particular area and that stand of trees. Typically, you'd place this in early May, um the science says that the ground temp should be around fifty degrees. Um so it's a it's a little bit of um uh a little early to predict exactly when that would be, but we're thinking it's about early May. Put about twenty per acre, so it doesn't have to be on every single tree, but you're looking for a certain density. Um and then in the adjacent areas where you don't uh where you're not placing the the packets, you establish monitoring traps. And those traps are indicating how many insects are in the area. Um and we would evaluate that monitoring process uh in the fall. And see and and try and understand whether we would need to do the pheromone uh application again the following year. Um or if uh we could um not use it in a particular area the following year. Right now, we're s- we're thinking that this would likely uh be be a two-year process. But it could uh potentially extend beyond that. Um it really all depends on uh what we're seeing in those monitoring traps. So that's the 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 quick and 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 dirty explanation of the bark beetle uh project that uh we're embarking on. And happy to take any questions right now.
Any questions therein? Uh I've got Patty and then Steve, Patty?
Yeah, um uh in case people have forgotten, I spent years and years and years with Northwest Colorado Council of Government. Working on bark beetle initiatives, going to Washington DC to the state level, et cetera. My concern about pheromones is, yeah, it tells the tree technically, or the the beetles. Um technically, the tree is full, go somewhere else. And so what happens is though, then those the bark beetle or fur whatever will just move to the next grove of trees that doesn't have pheromones on it. Or it hasn't already been attacked. Um so it it's kind of a cat and mouse chase. So um I'm not sure how effective it's been over the years, that's a question I'd like some information on. Um it's been some years because, you know, bark beetle pretty much devastated most of the counties within Northwest Colorado Council of Governments. But um you know, I think it might be something we wanna look at, but it does, it just. but it does, it just chases, it just tells the beetles to go to the next-door neighbor. The joke was always, we need to put them around the boundaries of Picking County and chase the bark beetle into the counties next door to us. But didn't happen that way either. So that's just a concern I had in the past and a concern I still have. Again, not sure what the answer is. We just need, you know, sometimes Mother Nature. You know, these infestations are not new. They've happened over the years. It's just now they're coming into areas where we do have concerns. So maybe, John, the issue here is, let's get them out of the areas, the woo-wee areas, the areas that are closest to homes, so we have less fire issues in those neighborhoods. But the beetles will just move on somewhere else. Thanks, Tori.
Thanks, Patty. Steve and then Rachel?
So my question is, does this Douglas fir bark beetle also attack the subalpine fir, which I think there's a whole lot more subalpine fir around than Douglas fir in parts of the county? Thank you.
I can, I can answer two of those questions. So one from Patty. They've actually had a lot of success with this MCH pheromone, 90% effective in Douglas fir stands. It, it doesn't protect the neighbors, as you said, but it is very effective in, in the areas where it is applied. And then Steve asked, to answer your question, the, the MCH packet is not effective with the subalpine fir. And so that's a, that's actually, they don't have a really great pheromone currently developed for that. And I agree, the subalpine fir is definitely present in and around the Aspen area, especially as you move further up Aspen Mountain.
Thank you, John. And Rachel?
Yeah, thank you so much. Yeah, it is frustrating to see wave after wave of these things, and I really do thank Patty for all her work for years with Northwest COG on this. You know, part of it is that we have a change in climate. And so from what I understand is the beetles are able to have far more breeding seasons in a year than they used to, and we're not having the winter cold that really kills them off. So we're, we're seeing infestations that are, are more severe than perhaps happened in the past. And what I wanted to kind of emphasize is, I really agree with the concern about just driving them to other areas, or, or the hill, the trees over the hill, and then they come back later. But when we were doing Smuggler Mountain, and there was a lot of private funding in that, clearly, but we were, they were stripping the bark off of the brood trees and removing the brood trees. So they weren't just kind of driving the beetles away. They were taking the, the, the trees down where the eggs had been laid and, and cut them down and then stripped the bark, and that kills all the, the eggs and the, the future spread in that sense. And so we can, we can get back to this later. I know this project is still in development, but I'm kind of wondering why we're not actually removing the brood trees and stripping bark as opposed to just trying to drive them away. And then the second question, again, which can be answered later, but i- is anybody out there developing any sort of trap? You know, so that rather than just drive them away, that, that, they get trapped by the pheromone, kind of like a wasp trap or, or something like this, so you're actually killing a lot of them rather than driving them to another grove of trees a mile and a half away. So those are my concerns, is that, again, I'm just used to the way we tried our best to get rid of it on Smuggler, was the actual removal of trees and stripping and not just pheromones. Thank you.
John or Austin, any responses?
I, you know, Rachel, I think those are great points. You know, it's, from what we understand, and I'm by no means an expert, but we've been working with a, with a great expert out of the Forest Service named Dan West. And I think each of, it's probably important to note that each of these beetles are slightly different, and the way that they behave in their life cycles, and the way that you can get rid of some of the brood trees, like you identified, I think is different species to species. And one of the difficulties in particular with the Doug fir bark beetle is cutting and dropping the tree in its location does not destroy the, 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 the eggs that are in the, in the bark. And it's a very complicated process to, to get them out. I think I'd also say that on the ute and on Shadow Mountain, where the work is, you know, set to, or is at least designed to take place, it's really difficult terrain for removing existing dead trees. And so, yeah, I think it's, it's, we've, we've asked some of those questions, and, and we hope to, you know, make progress on it, but all those concerns are noted for sure.
Hey, John, can I, I, if, you know, I was here with the bark beetle, the original pine beetle thing, and the, the, the packets that the pheromones that we used for the pine beetle were experimental. These MCH packets are not experimental. They use them on large forests throughout the Western United States. And, and Patty, you kind of hit why we're doing this at the end, is really to reduce the fire danger right near Aspen and, and to, and obviously to save the scenery, you know, so it's not all dead trees right there. Rachel, on your point, it costs a fortune to helicopter log those trees out of Smuggler and Hunter Creek. And to do that here, you know, this is a much steeper part of, of the area, and, and it would be really difficult and really expensive now. Plus, you can't really fly over Aspen. We had a good landing place. So we'd have to bring this up higher onto Aspen Mountain to do that. So, you know, right now, this is, this is one of the best ways, and the fire, Rick, if he's still on, can talk about it too. I mean, this is one of the best ways to really reduce the fire load and to, you know, save that scenery. Yes, Patty, you're right. We're going to push them somewhere else. But if we can keep them out of here, at least this area is not going to be ripe with a bunch of dead trees.
Yeah, Gary, this is Rick. You're right. You're exactly right about that. When Aspen Park got involved, it wasn't because of the view plane, although that's certainly important. A lot of people care about the view plane. Our concern was strictly wildfire, wildfire hazards and trying to mitigate that. So that's why we're, we're, we're a part of the project. So, thanks.
Well, thank you all for the great information on that. I appreciate it.
All right, looking for any final questions, either on the fur beetle or any others? I did hear a couple of requests for more information, whether that was kind of building code or hardening houses, and then some other requested information about beetle treatments. Hopefully, we'll get a check back in at our next joint meeting with a little bit more information, tracking down some of those questions. Are there any other comments from commissioners or counselors? All right. We'll go ahead and move to our next item on our agenda then, short-term rentals. Both, both entities have put in some work on this, so I'm going to look for, I guess maybe Phillip's going to start this presentation. But you do have information from both bodies in your packet. Phillip, are you starting this one?
Thank you, Mayor Tori and Council, and the Board of County Commissioners. My name is Phillip Sapino. I'm the Community Development Director for the city. And I'm actually going to kick it over to Cindy. The county is going to start leading with a little bit of data that they've found on short-term rentals in their jurisdiction. And then Pete Strecker, the Finance Director, and I will pick it up from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy, now we can see you, but we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
We got you.
Yeah, okay, thanks. I'm Cindy Huben. I'm the Community Development Director and Phillip's counterpart over in the county. And we coordinated on this discussion tonight, thinking that the main purpose is really just sharing our information, sharing not only the status of our regulation, and we know that the city is undertaking their, their discussions over the next six months on your regulations. But we also thought we'd share some of the status of the data that we've, we've been able to acquire through our third-party data resource, which is called MUNIREZ in the county. So we'll go ahead and share a lot of that. But again, tonight's purpose is really just to share information. There's no need for any decision-making tonight. And we really would just like to have the discussion. So I think I can get through my discussion probably in about 10 minutes, sharing the, basically the slides that I have through, that are in the memo that I submitted. Now, the trick is, if I can really share my slides from here, if not, I'm hoping that Kelly will be my backup. And I've sent those to you, Kelly, by way of email. So here I go. Let's see if we can get, get my slides. There I go. And let me see if I can. I'm not seeing.
I can share them, Cindy. I have them ready.
You can, okay. Well, hopefully I can get back into. Thank you, Kelly. I appreciate it. That was, that was a little trick there. But first of all, I'm, as Phillip said, I'm going to start with a bigger picture, and then we'll be able to funnel in on some of the data. But the data that the county has is that there's over 3,000 short-term rentals at any given time in the county as a total. And that total includes all the municipalities as well as the unincorporated Picking County. And we're able to drill down a little bit more in terms of where those are located. So Kelly, if you don't mind, go into the next slide for me. I appreciate, thank you. The, those rentals are located as they're shown here. And I'd like to preface this with a little bit of information. MUNIREZ, while it's a great tool, we think that it's a little shy in actually reporting all of what's going on out in the county. And the reason for that is, one, we believe that it's not going to pick up all of the luxury, maybe under the radar more types of rental markets that are out there. And we also want to remind people that, in this memo, we point out that these are the actual numbers that are rented at any given time. And these numbers are taken in November and December of 2021 as an example. So we know that there are more short-term rental licenses out there than are what's shown here in the city of what's actually being rented during that timeframe. So just to point that out, this is not as comprehensive as we would like, but it's a great body of information. So starting with unincorporated Picking County, we were a little bit shocked to see that there are only 157 that were up for rental during that timeframe of November and December. City of Aspen, 738. Towness MS Village, 259, and Town of Assault, 15. So Kelly, if you don't mind moving forward. So what we also asked our GIS department, and I really want to shout out and thank Tyler Lambretth for helping us with this particular chart. He was able to map for us in the county with our various planning areas, how many of those places for rent were located and in which planning area they were advertised. So just for interest in the City of Aspen and some of the concern right around the City of Aspen, our data, which we know is shy, but of the true numbers, but our data shows that there are only 42 units that during at least that timeframe were up for rent or advertised for rent through the, you know, and, and what we could see through our third-party data source. So 42 units in the urban growth boundary right outside of Aspen. That would include the Red Mountain area, east of Aspen, all the way to what we consider the end of the runway. So West Buttermilk and some of those neighborhoods in the lower portions of Maroon and Castle Creeks. So, and then finally, if we could go to the next slide. This is kind of a fun slide. I don't know if you guys can see this very well, but we have a thank you to our Assessors Office, Debbie Payne, as well as to our Clerk's Office and my staff, Alex Sanchez and Ellen Sisana, for helping pull this together. What we looked at, because the provisions that I'll explain in a little bit more detail in a second from the county, are looking at potential of allowing licenses only for those people who are owner-occupied, local residents. And, and so we wanted to take a look, even though this is not a true indicator of that. We looked at how many of these addresses that we had in unincorporated Picking County actually had owners who were voter-registered within Picking County. So it came out really close to about 50/50. So about 50% of the, those units that are up for rent in that two-month period were actually owner-occupied units. And this is something we'll talk a little bit more about in terms of the provisions that the board has. And then also, Kelly asked a good question, so we explored a little bit about the valuations of those units that we have addresses for. And those are listed here in terms of the average and the median and, you know, smaller values in terms of where they're located. And that might give us a little bit of an edge and help on thinking about what taxation we might want to look at. And we're, we're happy to, you know, our county resources are countywide, so we're happy to work more and dig in a little bit more with the city as we go forward, if the city, you know, wants anything, any of this information that we might be able to help with over the next couple of months. But that's kind of the, the data part of the memo that the county put out. As far as the ordinance itself, that is also attached to your, your packet tonight. But I'd like to just briefly go over the provisions within the ordinance that I think are the most significant ones for us to kind of keep our eye on relative to the county's proposal. And once again, the county's proposal is going to be read at second reading on January 26th before the Board of County Commissioners, and it's a public hearing. And I also want to point out, in the memo that we put before you, there's a link to the letters that we've been receiving from the public. And anybody can take a look at those and see where those line out in terms of folks favoring regulations and discussion about the specific regulations that the Board of County Commissioners has put forward. I'm not going to go into the detail of those tonight with you because we've gotten a lot of new ones in tonight, so, or this today, I'm sorry, or over the last several days. So I won't go into the detail of, of those specific comments. But relative to our proposed ordinance, the main points I'd like to point out are that they are going to require a licensing for the rental properties that are renting for less than 30 days. That's the provision. It's a less than 30 days provision. And they're going to provide penalties, penalties for those engaging in the activities of renting your property for less than 30 days without a license. They will also establish a system that will track these licenses on an annual basis. And the licenses as proposed would only be good for one year at a time and provide for the collection of whatever the applicable sales tax provisions would be. And would require that the rented properties not create a disturbance for the neighborhoods as one of our large provisions. And require that rented properties be maintained so that they're safe, not only for the individuals who are renting the units, but also for the neighborhoods in general and the surrounding properties. And would also have a provision that would prohibit the rental or the licensing, excuse me, in the rural and remote zone districts. My memo points out the reasoning behind a lot of these provisions. So we can go into more depth if the board would like, but I don't want to take up all the time tonight. And then the final is what I've mentioned earlier, that the, that the proposal that the board has and will be looking at on the 26th will prohibit the licensing of properties that are not principal residence and resident owner-occupied properties. So with that, I think I've covered pretty much everything that I wanted to highlight from the county's perspective in terms of sharing information. But there's more detail in the memo, and I see Kelly's hand, and I'm happy to answer questions before we move on to Phillip.
Thanks Cindy. Actually, I've got two hands up. I've got Skippy and then Kelly if I could.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tari. Hey Cindy, it's so nice to see your face. It's been just emails forever, so.
Yeah, thank you.
I had a couple of questions on the data, just to make sure I'm understanding it. And then I'll have another question at the end. But I saw three slides with three different data sets. The first one, the Airbnb number was 1,230 units, which is probably the number closest to approximating the low from the actual number of STRs active in, in my professional opinion. But then the, the slides that followed, I just was doing some, some quick math, but it looked like about 1,159 or 1,160 was the total on the second one, which is closer to that Airbnb number, which kind of makes sense to me. But then that next slide, the third one, showed somewhere in the vicinity of like 97 to 100 active listings. So there's a lot of different total numbers of STRs between the slides, and I'm wondering if you can explain that to me.
Right, thank you, Skippy, for reminding me about all that. What we did is we got those first total numbers from MUNI-RES. And then what we did with the county-specific unincorporated numbers, we were able to scrub those a little bit better and found that we had a lot of duplicates in those because they might have been advertised several times through different companies. So that does give us a little bit of different numbers within each one of those slides. But when it comes to the unincorporated Picken County numbers, we scrub those really well, and we feel like we have a, a good sense of that. So maybe that's proportional with the city as well.
Okay. I guess I, I, so I, I understand the, the duplication, right? And that's why I like that first slide, when you have that 3370 number, it's super misleading, not intentionally misleading, but it's just almost nobody lists on Airbnb who doesn't also list on those other ones, right? So like, it's kind of fair in my eyes to say, the Airbnb number is the closest to the total. There's a couple handfuls that are only on VRBO. And then there's probably several handfuls that just don't list on any of the sites. But, right, like the Airbnb one approximates it. So I understand why that number would drop from that 1,230 number, certainly to the, like 1,100. But that third slide that was like 100, I would not expect it to drop up that low. So I don't really understand that.
But the 100, and are you looking at this last one, the 151?
I think it's the one before this.
That one before. Kelly, can you back up? I'm sorry.
Yeah, this one, this is the one that really threw me.
That's just Picken County.
But it says UGB in that.
I'm sorry. Yeah, the UGB is only the unincorporated portion of Picken County.
Okay.
Yeah.
The UGB here does not mean Aspen.
Right, I'm sorry, it's just our unincorporated portion.
That, that makes a lot more sense to me, and I appreciate it.
Okay, sorry.
So on the same page now. And then the last question I had, in, in the, the ordinance that the county's put forward, as you've said, it's intended that licenses, as I understand it, will only be permitted for primary residences, for people who live there. I love that you guys matched the voter data. That's actually one of the things that we started doing in our marketing a long time ago, is cross-reference those, so we didn't market to anybody who was local. So that's really funny that you guys did the same thing. But do you guys have a sense of how, what, what the two buckets are? Because what I want to understand is, how many current STRs will no longer be permitted? And, and how many do we anticipate will remain?
Well, under the county provision, I can only speak because we only did the cross-reference of the voter registration with the unincorporated, the ones that you see here. So it was about 50/50.
Got it, okay. But this rule will apply to, not to Aspen, but to the rest of, of Picken County, or only the unincorporated parts?
Only unincorporated, because Picken County regulations are only outside of Aspen, outside of Townesville Village and Basalt. So it's only unincorporated.
So the parts of Basalt that are in Picken County wouldn't be covered either?
No, because that's incorporated.
Okay, I am caught up, please and thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Skippy. Kelly and then Rachel?
Yeah, my question will be quick because Skippy honed into, onto what I was curious about. But I am wondering, do you think that this, these numbers are capturing any of the contracts that are coming through the real estate agencies or the private property managers at all?
There is a provision that says "other." And I'm not sure because we did not dig that deep. Unfortunately, I'm not as familiar with MUNI-RES as some other folks who helped with that initially. But I think that "other" tries to look at those that are advertised only. So I don't know if they're advertised only within a company, say, you know, that just goes out to a list of folks who the company has a list for. I don't think we would be picking those up. So I think they're, I think this number is not capturing everything. I think it's publicly advertised, yeah.
Thank you, Cindy.
I would just comment, I know that the city of Denver tracks 80 different platforms for this type of marketing. Wow, thanks.
Thanks, Kelly. Rachel?
Yeah, thank you all so much. And I'm really glad we're having these conversations. I guess what I'm wondering, Cindy, it sounds like if you extrapolate from the small sample that you did, that roughly 50% of the homes in Picken County are resident owner-occupied now, 50% off. I'm kind of going, well, how many total homes are in Picken County? Would 50% mean that we could have half of all the residences in Picken County, other than rural and remote, become short-term rentals? And, and what is that total number? And you don't have to jump in right now, but that, that, it sounds very, very wide open. And then the second is, I think it'd be really helpful to understand, if possible, what, what has the rate of growth been in, in using your homes this way? And if we're on a certain trajectory, where, where would that take us? Even just looking at your one slide, from November to December of rentals, the, the things had gone up fairly significantly i- in those two months, you know? So I'm kind of wondering, what, what would our trend line be? And it, it, it strikes me that there probably are other considerations to the appropriateness related to, say, transportation. Are they on a transportation corridor, or are these going to be car-driven guests at, at all times in the future? And we, we are just starting, as you know, in, in this paused time period to try to answer a lot of these questions. So I understand if you don't have answers that we, we don't have either. But trying to really understand the employment demand that is created by the STRs. Because I'll say it, and I've said it before, I don't hold out a lot of hope that you're going to see a return to renting to housekeepers and cooks because of short-term rental management. But there is a point at which you're either adding to an increasing demand for more employees or you're not. And so whether or not this results in, in any housing is, is totally different. But what, what it will do is increase demand for employees. And I think we need to get a, a good sense of that for all of us. And the, the last kind of comment I would have is, I think it's going to be really important to, and it is to me, and this one maybe you can answer, of, what do you mean by owner-occupied resident, you know, owner? Does that mean that they pay their Colorado taxes here, income tax? And how do we assure that, yes, I own the home, but I'm in Europe for six months, and there's really no one there, even though they own the home? Is it a requirement that they reside in the home while it's being rented? Or just that they own the home and they declare it as their primary place? And, and part of the reason I ask on, on Colorado income tax is that what creates a resort or what creates the amenity to be able to sell depends on a lot more than what we fund here at the city and county level. Whether it's state patrol, keeping the roads safe, the airports running, you know, Colorado Department of Public Health and, you know, environment. But all the different things that are funded through our income taxes that support our community and that flow into our community. And so that's why it, it just, it just struck me of, you know, a lot of STRs is kind of privatizing the profit and socializing the cost. And I, I just don't want to see that happen further when both the city and county are always applying to the state for, for grants and looking for money for various projects. And so that, that's a question. How do we really define and, and then follow through with what is resident occupied primary residence mean? And, and what does someone have to do to really comply with that standard? Because you can register to vote and un-register to vote a week later and re-register where you want to make your vote count, you know, and we know that. So that, that's a tricky standard. Thank you.
If you wanted me to answer that last one, we, we do have provisions. John Ely has worked on a number of provisions that he feels are solid provisions, but it does include being registered to vote. And I saw that John was on here. I wasn't prepared with that list of criteria. But Rachel, what we intend to do is incorporate that list into our provision when we create a licensing program. But there's John, maybe he'll help me out here.
Hey Cindy. You know, what this does is it, it provides for a way to demonstrate that an applicant either is or isn't eligible for a, a license. And in so doing, provides that the applicant must furnish to, to the county, certain forms of proof of residency. If there is an issue of, oh, a change in voter registration, for example, that can be done, you know, continually throughout the course of the year. If we, but that is also a, a fact that can be uncovered easily. And if that's what's going on, if there's a manipulation of the system, then the application for a license or the renewal of that license will simply be denied. So right now, what the, what the applicant must demonstrate is that, number one, the applicant has to be a natural person. Cannot be a created entity like an LLC or corporation or, or anything else. The applicant, in addition to being a natural person, must be an owner of the property that's proposed for licensing or have an ownership of interest in that property. That ownership interest, if not complete, you know, full fee interest, must be coupled with permission from all other ownership interest holders for the, the rental operation. The applicant must also use the property as their principal residence. There's a statement that the regulation recognizes that an applicant can only have one principal residence at one time. The, the, the proof which must be provided are two of the following. Valid Colorado driver's license, valid motor vehicle registration statement, current voter registration, or federal or tax, income tax returns. There is another category for additional information, which might be dispositive, but which might, but which is not specifically enumerated in the current version of the regulation. If two of these types of identification are presented and deemed to be legit, then the application can go forward. If it, if it is not coupled with the application, the application would be denied. Does that get you?
Thank you. But let, let me just ask the one small follow-up, John. If someone declares their Picken County home as their primary resident, does that mean that that's the state they pay prop, they pay income tax in?
That's the location that they, that they declare as their residence for income tax. That's great.
Okay, thank you very much for that, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, John. I've got a hand up here from Ward.
Yeah, hi John. My, my question, I think, is around the LLC and a, a, not a created entity can apply for a license in a permanent residence. I understand that, but does, does this mean that all of the owners of properties that are anonymous as LLCs, if they're going to do an STR license from Picken County, that they're going to have to identify who the real owner is, who the person behind that LLC is? Or can they just have a proxy person as the resident in that, that unit or that property?
Hey Ward, no, the individual applicant must have an ownership interest in the property. So if it's an LLC, that applicant must be a member of the LLC. If it is a, an S corp or a C corp, then that person must be a shareholder of that, that corporation. If the person is not a full fee owner, then permission must be obtained from all other individuals who have an ownership interest in the property, either themselves or through an entity. In other words, all the other members of the LLC or all the other shareholders of, of an S corp. So that must be disclosed, and that must be completed before an, a license can be issued.
So an LLC can actually get an STR permit if, if the people there are identified? Businesses can do it and sell someone a, a tenth of a percent of the home and say you can live in the spare bedroom and it's really an investment property for the rest of the LLC?
Well, you cannot really stop property from being an investment for anybody who owns it. That's the nature of property owners, or one of the, the natures of property ownership anyway. An LLC cannot be the holder of a license because it's not a natural person. So an LLC cannot apply for a license. It has to be done through a natural person who has an ownership interest, or in that case, a stake in the LLC.
All right, we've got more presentation. Are there any other questions here for Cindy or county staff? If not, let's move over to city presentation. Phillip?
Thanks, Mayor Tari. May I share my screen?
Please do.
You should be able to see my presentation.
Yep.
Great. So thanks again to the BOCC for creating this opportunity for us to present to you and the Aspen City Council. Just have a brief presentation this evening and, and can, we can really get into the discussion, which I think is the focus of everybody's attention. which I think is the focus of everybody's attention here this evening. The city of Aspen since 2019 has been having an ongoing conversation about the short-term rental market. And the way that we've chosen to staff and approach that conversation is really focusing first on the data and then on some of the financials, making sure that we're getting business licenses and tax compliance. And it's really only been in the last year or so that we've honed in more on a discussion around the relationship between land use and community character and short-term rental operations, and that's where we find ourselves today. Fascinating. There we go. So this is a map that shows the majority of what I'll call in Aspen, right? We're missing some of the things going on at Highway 82 and over by Highlands, but we zoomed in on this portion of the map just to highlight the location and extent of short-term rental operations within the city limits. This data is from about November of last year, 2021. The size of the dot sort of shows the number of short-term rentals that are in a given location. And what I think is an interesting departure for our dataset from the county's dataset is we have a high concentration of short-term rentals in some places where that type of use is anticipated and appropriate. These would be lodge and commercial zone districts that are close to the bottom of Little Nell, that are in properties that are, again, zoned for a lodge use, have a historic short-term rental and residential ownership component. We use the term in the city condo tell or condo hotel to capture that type of use. So the Aspen Alps or the Gant, things which are a residential property, which are owned by an individual or an LLC or a group of individuals, but are placed on the short-term rental market and made available to the tourist population. The extent of this use has grown significantly over the last 10-plus years since the city first had a conversation about its desire to regulate or not short-term rentals. And our current regulations are, by the standard of, I think, many other mountain towns, fairly light. We presently require a business license for any short-term rental in town, and we require them to get a tax ID and remit lodgers' tax and sales tax. And they have to receive from the community development department a basic permit, which provides us with contact information for an owner or a property manager, describes the property from a legal standpoint, and generally memorializes the fact that there is a property with X address where there is a short-term rental located. And the discussion over the last 12 months or so between staff and city council and members of the community has been, at least in part, focused on whether or not that regulatory structure is sufficient relative to the state of the market as it exists today as opposed to 10 to 12 years ago when those regulations were put in place. And this sort of relatively unregulated market or lightly regulated market has brought some significant benefits for the community, for private property owners in terms of revenue for owners, tax revenue for the community, economic stimulation through increased visitation. There are just, you know, objectively more lodge bids in town than there were a decade ago. That means there are more people who are able to visit and deposit tax money in the city coffers and support our local businesses. There's also been some costs, and I think we're starting to get our head around those more and more as a community, but broadly, regionally, and nationally, those costs, I think, have become increasingly well-inventory. It's things like traffic and displacement of year-round residents with short-term residents, a motivation to redevelop residential properties. If there's a stronger financial incentive to have a certain type of residence and that operates on a sort of cash-positive basis once it's been redeveloped, that we see as an additional incentive to engage in residential redevelopment activity. And then there's unmitigated employee generation. So here in the city, obviously, when you engage in any type of development activity, there's an employee generation number or requirement that's attached to that development activity. And at present, as we do not distinguish between a short-term rental and a residential property in terms of land use, that there may be a delta in terms of affordable housing mitigation that isn't being assessed on a use that may be generating more affordable housing mitigation than a traditional residential property might. Again, a little trouble. Okay. This next map, we call it, in planning school, we call it a heat map on to make maps like this. This shows the intensity of a land use in a community as opposed to the density, which we show on the previous map. What we're learning is that there's not necessarily a direct relationship between intensity of a use in a given part of our community and the impacts that residents might be experiencing from that type of use. In the case of short-term rentals, you can again see the heavy concentration in our commercial and lodge zone districts where one would expect to see lodging accommodations. Yet anecdotally, we need to get our head around this better by engaging in some community outreach, but anecdotally, what we believe to be the case is that the impacts from short-term rentals are felt on a very individual basis. And so there may be one short-term rental on a block or five in a neighborhood that have the potential to create more of a community impact, neighborhood impact, change the character of a neighborhood than that highly intensified use that you see in the red and orange areas in our commercial core and in our lodge and zone districts. Some interesting statistics, and again, we're sort of playing catch-up here, I think, relative to the county in terms of some of our data gathering and analysis. But presently, based on the numbers, we have approximately 17% of the residential units in the city of Aspen are operated as short-term rentals. And that is an aggregate number that does not factor out APCHA units, that does not factor out different housing unit types, condos versus single-family homes, et cetera. It's just a sort of aggregate number to give you a sense of the scale of the use in the community. And many communities are starting to make some distinctions between different types of land uses. Is a short-term rental a land use, like residential, like commercial, like lodge? Or is it truly a residential use and something that may be a distinguishing, that we could focus our distinguishing factors on more of the financial profile or other considerations besides straight zoning type considerations? But that and among many other things are precisely what council has directed the city staff to look at over the coming months to assess again whether there's alignment between some of our stated community policy around land use and community character and sustainability and the present state of the short-term rental market. And Pete Strecker, the city finance director, I can walk you through a little bit, some of the financial information and compliance information that we have on, again, that current state of our market.
Thanks, Phillip. So these are some figures that we have collected, and these have been updated since the last time we shared this with council. We are now through a full 12-month period of collections. And basically, overall, we have seen that short-term rentals at this point generated about 67 million in taxable lodging sales over the last 12 months. And we have now established about 1,400 total permits, excuse me, vacation rental permits, either fully active or pending, fully active status. And there's some folks that are still kind of outliers in terms of getting through the application process. This is a large shift from, I guess, where we were about a year ago when we only had 70 vacation rental permits issued. This has been kind of the leveraging of the new software. We are on the same platform as what Cindy had mentioned, UniRevz. I believe it scrapes about 40 different websites that are doing listings currently, not the 80 that maybe Denver is able to reach, but still a large number and definitely the big players in that market. Next slide. In terms of total lodging sales, like I mentioned, it's about 67 million coming from the taxable sales that are driven by short-term rentals. This is about 30, you know, 34, 35, 37% of the total lodging sales in the city. There's additional non-taxable sales for anything over that 30-day period. That's about another 17 to 18 million in total sales. Definitely a heavy chunk there, and certainly the bulk of non-taxable sales, because as you would anticipate, a lot of the traditional lodging is usually done on a less-than-30-day basis. But whereas the short-term rental market does seem to see some folks stay a little bit longer than that 30-day period. Next slide. As Phillip mentioned, we really kind of do some oversight and regulation on two different fronts. There's both the tax side and then the land use side. The business license achieves the tax side basis, which is really following in my shop. You know, we do charge a fee for the business license. It's kind of equated to a standard business license for any business within the city of Aspen at $150. In terms of total collections for a given year right now, at, let's say, 1,300 licenses, we're just a little shy of 200,000 total collection there for, from these business licenses. And they are truly tied to both the location and the business owner, as is true for any business within the city of Aspen, so they're not transferable. This is slightly different from a vacation rental permit where that is specifically tied to the property. So as a property sells and the prior owner already had a vacation rental permit in place, right now that permit is good through the duration of that period and it is transferable to the new ownership at this time. These permits are free of charge at this point and certainly are really intended to start to convey kind of the responsibilities of the business owner in terms of their tax remittance, but also their understanding of our land use codes and certainly providing kind of a local representative to help address issues for any tenants on the property. In our discussions with council in the past, Phillip and I have tried to summarize just some basic understanding of what our council has kind of been communicating back to us. We're certainly hearing some language around trying to make sure we don't harm our local residents, but also at the same time try to preserve the residential character within our residential districts. We also know that the condo hotel lodging model is something that has been embraced by our community, and we want to make sure that it's not harmed and that there's, you know, certainly an appropriate place for some of these commercial businesses within our commercial districts certainly makes sense. But there's still some work to be done in these various areas, and over the coming months, we, Phillip and myself, working with our council, will try to flush out how we move forward in each of these areas. Phillip, do you have anything to add on those?
No, I guess just on the last bullet point, I would suggest that when we talk about community infrastructure, we at the city, I think, are taking a broad interpretation of what that means. We consider affordable housing to be community infrastructure. We consider a functional, adequate local labor market to be essential community infrastructure as well as more traditional things like impact to services, be it emergency services or utility services, transportation, parking, et cetera. Being at the sustainability of that infrastructure and services, again, through, sorry to be repetitive, through a sustainability lens, because our Aspen area community plan directs us to do so and because council directs us to do so. So I just sort of add that for commentary. And so to summarize, at least from the city's perspective, where we feel like this discussion this evening might appropriately lead, you know, to really three questions. Is there a shared understanding between the board and council about the impacts of the current short-term rental market on our jurisdictions? What are your ideas for changing regulations around short-term rentals in your jurisdictions? And is there alignment between those ideas and that understanding and potential opportunities for collaboration on regulations or on the administration of those regulations and enforcement as well? And I can speak for city staff in saying that we're enthusiastic to have the conversation and hear input from all sides. Thank you.
Thank you, Phillip. So commissioners and board members, if you just take a quick look at those three questions, we are at 6 o'clock, so we need to wrap this meeting when we can. We do have some comments and questions coming up right now, though. But as I was saying, if you just keep these three items in mind as you're making your comments, that'd be helpful for our staff, I know that for sure, and could lead into some collaborative efforts as well. So we'll get right into it. I've got Skippy, Francie, and then Patty. So we'll start with Skippy, please.
Yes. I had one question for you, Phillip, and then I'll follow up on your request, but is it possible for us to sort of mimic the county's process for identifying what percentage of our STRs are primary residence owner use versus non? Yes, and we're actually doing that work currently. Cool. That's going to be super interesting for a bunch of reasons I'll keep to myself, because we're on a timeline. So just kind of my general thoughts, this is mostly for the staffs, but if any of my colleagues, you know, disagree or want to add to it, please do that. When I think about why we are approaching regulation of the STR space, there's basically three overarching reasons, right? There's neighborhood impact, there's housing for locals, and then there's over tourism question, right? And so I think there's varying degrees of necessary collaboration for success versus sharing of best practices versus it would be nice, but it doesn't matter so much. The over tourism piece is the piece where I think there just has to be coordination. At some point, someone has to identify what does that mean to us? Because if we, you know, work on this in one area and open it up in the other, then we're not doing anything. So I think there needs to be clear goal coordination there and thinking about what do these policies in unison mean for the overall number of tourists in town. The second one, which has sort of the middle interaction for me, is the neighborhood impact.
Oh, five.
Is the neighborhood impacts. So in most cases, I think the county can do what they feel is best, we can do what we feel is best, and we can share best practices. The one area where I think further coordination is definitely needed is transportation, as Rachel talked about, as it deals with mass transit and changes to that. I think that's a place of necessary coordination. And then the third one, housing, is super important to all of us. My expectation is that, you know, the total of these, both of these are going to deliver little, but non-zero amount of housing back to locals. And my view is like, the more, the better, but whether we coordinate or not is not really important. You know, we may even benefit from taking different approaches and just sharing best practices, because ultimately, if the county succeeds, we succeed. If we succeed, the county succeeds, and we don't have to be in lockstep to achieve that. So that's sort of my kind of general understanding.
Thank you, Skippy. I'm going to move over to Francie, then Patty, and then Rachel for comments. Francie?
I do think it would be great if we could collaborate, but I think we have very different situations between the city and the county, especially thanks to Phillip's really cool demographic maps. Those were awesome, Phillip. Thank you very much for that presentation. It was really helpful to me. My question, I think, that we really need to look at more for Aspen, but perhaps for other parts of the county as well, is do STRs bring more people to the city who might otherwise stay in traditional lodging? Are we taking people out of traditional lodging and putting them in STRs and therefore hurting your traditional lodging owners? Or are these different kinds of tourists who wouldn't stay in traditional lodging? They're looking to come with other, couple of other couples, their kids, they want to stay in a house, they don't want to stay in a hotel. I'm pretty sure that's true in Redstone to a certain extent, that these are not people who would come and stay at an inn. They're looking for a different kind of vacation experience. So I just really think that we need to look at who are these people who are renting STRs? And are they hurting traditional lodging? Are they increasing the number of tourists who are coming? Or are they just staying somewhere else? Thank you. Thanks again, Phillip, for that presentation.
Thanks, Francie. Patty, and then Rachel?
Yeah, I'm just going to be really quick, Torrey. Thanks, and thanks for the information. Just, you know, I was just contacted by somebody a little bit earlier who was going to a meeting tonight, Carbondale Town Council regarding STRs. She wanted to talk to me, and I said I was in the middle of this meeting. So I forwarded on to her, Phillip and Cindy's agenda item summaries from today's meeting. I don't know, I think we need to collaborate. I just think at the end of the day, we might have, regulations are a little different because we are a little different, but I think having some consistency, the main thing is we need to address this issue, obviously, sooner than later, especially on the county side that we know. obviously sooner than later, especially on the county side that we now have the ability to do so. And hopefully what comes out at our meeting next week, I'm not sure if we'll pass it next week, but because we're just gonna really be gathering information from the public, it should be very interesting, and I'm sure you guys will want to tune in and see what the community has to say at our public hearing next Wednesday. So thank you, and Phillip, thank you for your information. It was really interesting. And Cindy, I love the new stuff that we, the board hadn't seen yet. I think it'll be helpful in our decision-making process next week. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Patty. We've got Rachel, Ward, and then Kelly.
Thank you, and thank you all. I'll try to be brief. I was talking to a friend of mine the other day who lives in Carbondale, and they saw that a home was being demolished next to them, they got the public notice. So they looked at the plans, and then they called the comm dev department to say, "Have you guys really looked at these plans? This is not being designed as a home, it's being designed as a short-term rental." It was six bedrooms with six separate bathrooms, so that you could just lock them off. And, you know, that's what's happening, is that homes are not being designed to be homes anymore. They're designed to be these short-term rentals. So that's a real issue in terms of where you think we're going to go. What do you want to see all the undeveloped lots of Picken County become? And the other thing is, I really just want to emphasize this, the valley wide is experiencing the same short-term rental boom and acceleration of real estate prices and retirement. And that's where a lot of our housing crunch is going to continue to come from. It's just going to get worse and worse, frankly, as things are developed mid-valley, as there's great jobs mid-valley, where people don't have to commute to town. And so while we're gonna try to deal with housing at some level, creating new workforce demand right now, I think, is really problematic. And our service levels are starting to suffer, and people leave an area where the service levels aren't very good. You know, I am a little worried about jurisdiction shopping. You know, if people are deciding where to buy, where is it easier to STR, where is it easier? That it would be perhaps better to have more coordination and collaboration when possible. But I certainly acknowledge what Francine is saying, that, you know, the county has different interests than the city does. And different populations and different geographies. So there's really that. The last two thoughts I would have is like to say, how does this increased number of lodging beds, commercial activities within all the residential neighborhoods, how does that really jive with the community plan? How does it jive with the numbers that we have all adopted as being what should be happening within the urban growth boundary? And is this an adjunct to that? Is this an amendment? Or is this just kind of discarding the community plan to say, no, those things don't matter anymore? Numbers don't matter, quantities don't matter. And we're facing that in the city, too, so please, no, I'm talking to myself and to my own board, my own public when I talk about these things. But you just have to ask, if we were starting from scratch, and if there was nothing on Red Mountain, would you be approving the homes of those sizes to become short-term rentals? Would we be approving fifty percent of all the home sites within Picken County as being potential for short-term rentals with no cap whatsoever? Because it's gonna be a lot harder to reel this back in later after, hey, it's okay to do this throughout all these areas. And we're feeling that, too, in the city. But what would our community be if all of fifty percent, forty-five percent, some percentage of all of our residential structures were really no longer about families or community members? They were about lodging opportunities. It wouldn't be the Aspen that most of us moved to, and it wouldn't be the Aspen most of us would have stayed in. So I think we need to take a real hard look at where this takes us in ten years, if it's not dealt with appropriately now. Thank you all.
Thank you, Rachel. Ward, then Kelly, and then John. Ward?
Yeah, thank you. I'm gonna do a race to start versus a deep dive, but I just have a bunch of bullet points here that I think we all need to consider as we, in our jurisdictions, attack all this subject. I think that all of the reasons why we are addressing the STRs, the job generation, all of that, I think we all agree on that. So I'm just gonna hit some of the things, bullet point down the line here. Perhaps to limit the number of STRs in a zone district, create new zones for STRs. Perhaps a sliding scale for vacation rentals based on maybe the number of beds or the number of nights a year that they are to be rented. Decrease density on rentals further away from the targets bullseye. And what I kind of define as a bullseye is summary between the gondola and 1A, the core, so that as you have a concentric circle moving away, that less density for STRs would be allowed. Have a responsible party, whether it's a real estate agent or an owner, as your local point of contact. Require, and this is the county, I like this, require only permanent residence ability to rent short-term. Limit the number of nights a year property can be rented as an STR, thinking kind of locals, protecting the locals. To require an inspection for safety standards before property can do a short-term rental. Make sure that swamp detectors, carbon monoxide, and other safety measures are in place. Require a full-time rental, this is the question, full-time rental of the structure, not just a bedroom within a house. Indolent enforcement with meaningful fines payable by the rental agent, not by the person that's renting it, because they probably never pay it. Posting a parking and noise restrictions on the property and require signing acknowledgement for restrictions by the renter. Neighborhood disruption, commercial operations in residential areas prohibit in certain zones, fractional ownership restrictions. It's impossible to tell a fractional ownership that you can't rent short-term. And the tax inequity for some of the lodges, a lot of the condos are paying residential property taxes, but some of the hotels are paying commercial, and that creates inequity in the taxing. Picken County and Aspen has homes or investment opportunities. And I think this really attacks the fabric of our community. And finally, an agreement between the county and the city of what properties are exempt. I noticed that there's pretty good lists in the county's packet about what types of properties are exempted, you know, lodges, hotels, bed and breaths, they're exempted. So we have different sets of numbers for what STRs are. So we at the city want to allow the grandfather in all of the condo hotels and lodges, yet they are still counted as STRs. This is, this is just, you know, we could go on for hours, and we will go on for hours at city council and DOCC, but these are just my ideas of points of discussion, and appreciate everybody's time. Thank you.
Thanks, Ward. Those are some of the details that we'll be working on, but those are all good stepping off points. And I saw Phillip taking a couple notes there as well, keeping up with you. So those will return back to us for a deeper conversation at council. I've got Kelly, John, and then Skippy.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to kind of reflect some things that I've heard as our board prepares to debate second reading next week, because, you know, I'm not sure that the county has gotten ahead of the city at all. I mean, part of where we came from in starting this was really a generation of like, "Let's just set up a licensing program so we can figure out what we have, where it is, who's doing what, who's the who, et cetera." And I think as the pressure of the last two years has built in our community, we started to broaden that conversation more widely into, should we be regulating at the same time that we're adopting an ordinance to license? And that's the direction we've started to move by proposing to prohibit it in rural and remote, which is a zoning approach, and then also looking at the resident occupied, which, you know, functionally is just a criteria to act as a quota, is the way I see it, is, you know, by only letting it be an opportunity for resident-owned properties, you know, we are gonna limit the number that are able to take advantage of it. But it doesn't dive into sort of the questions of the where is appropriate or what are the impacts that cross jurisdictional boundaries? And that's what I'm hearing a bit from the city. I think, you know, like for me, I think it's a really valid question to say, "Should we just be limiting this to certain places along transportation routes?" You know, and perhaps as our last mile infrastructure gets better, maybe we open it to that. But that's not a conversation we've had at the BOCC to this point. And then I'm also, you know, I think I know I could use additional input from our city partners about, like, what does this mean for how Red Mountain affects you guys directly on the city, you know, border? Like, is it enough? Is it not enough? Is it enough to say, "Let's see how this works, and we'll come back in two years" and assess if problems have gotten better or worse, so we have a sense? And then finally, I'm not sure any of our programs are really capturing kind of the intensity of this use, which for me is a really big outstanding question. So maybe the sales tax does that, and the city, you would know this better than we do, because we don't have this infrastructure in place. But, you know, how often are these individual units getting rented out? How many people are using them at one time? What are the time periods and years that this is happening? Like, these are the questions that get to sort of the over tourism, you know, question that Skippy raised that I think is what we're really feeling here, right? We're feeling this intense use in our community, we're feeling the, you know, additional pressures on resources and amenities throughout our community. And right now, I'm not sure either of our programs are providing enough information to answer that, so maybe we have an opportunity to strengthen that and figure that out here. That would be really good to do on a shared line, because this would be shared data that we would want to rely on with each other. So those are just some of the things I'm thinking about. Also, I sent you all a paper on tax equity. I'd love sort of to have a follow-up conversation, or you guys have the council discuss among your board and maybe through staff, give some input just on the topic. Because I think if this is a legislative switch to look at tax equity, you know, at some point, does a property become a commercial property? And should it be taxed accordingly to really support the community infrastructure that we rely on taxes to support? I think is what's being debated right now, and we need to be able to tell our mountain legislators, you know, how we feel about this topic, because it's moving in the legislature. And, you know, I know I could use that conversation with you all on a separate but related note. Those are my questions, thoughts, ideas for this topic.
Thank you for all of that, Kelly. John, and then Skippy?
Yeah, I just had a couple things. I really like that we are meeting together on this problem, because we all know that all resort communities across Colorado and the Mountain West, really across the world, are dealing with this same issue currently. I think, obviously, the location is an important part of this, keeping it out of certain areas, limiting or maybe even excluding them. But I think the most important thing I'd like to share is, I think, collaboration is important for us between our two entities, because it creates a unified front. And that way, we have a better position to deal with the pushback. And obviously, we have way more similarities than we have differences. Thank you all for your presentation.
Thanks, John. From over here, Skippy?
Yeah, I just, I really appreciated Rachel, your comments about taking the longer view and what would this mean for our community character and makeup if we're looking ten years out? And I think you raised some really important concerns, and I just wanted to kind of close this with some balancing concerns, because I think the tendency for us as, you know, legislators is to look at the problem and solve from the problem. But there are also benefits that STRs convey. You know, we used to have an affordable lodging base. Most of those small lodges have left. I was just talking to someone who's looking for a room at the quote-unquote "affordable W", and it's twelve hundred dollars for a normal room, not a peak time, but just in the winter. And so the STR base does provide sort of the last vestige of affordable lodging that is available to people. I think one of the other great merits is, you know, I remember growing up coming here, that, you know, you really felt like family when you landed. There was a intermingling between tourists and guests that I think over time, we've really seen fray and get privatized. And so the local resident renting out a spare bedroom provides the opportunity to really meet community and tourists in a way that I think is really healthy and really in the spirit of historic Aspen. And I think for that local resident, right, who maybe had kids and was lucky enough to buy a house back in the day, and the kids are now gone and they're spare bedrooms, but their income hasn't gone up, and all of a sudden, every dinner in town is three hundred dollars, it provides some added income to continue to play part in the Aspen experience. So I think there's great reasons for us to be regulating these things and looking at them, but I just also wanted to give a little voice to some of the positive impacts that STRs bring as well, because ultimately, this is gonna be a balance.
Thanks, Skippy. You know, my only comments here are definitely that we are working together, and, you know, this is proof of it. But the county moving forward with their meetings, us moving forward, we're gonna be sharing information, collaborating on kind of the aims, the goals that we're shooting for here. Yes, you know, the conversation at the council table has not been about eliminating all short-term rentals by any means. We recognize that there are some appropriate places for the short-term rentals in our community, and it is part of our community. So, you know, I hope that everybody that's viewing this and listening to the conversations understands that one of our main priorities here is protection of the local, and that means on many sides of the coin. But I wanted to throw one thing in again, on dovetailing off of what Rachel's comments were, is really about that ten years, the sustainability of our community. Not just about the desirability of when we moved here, but the desirability in ten years, but truly that sustainability for the community going forward. So I appreciate you guys so much. It is just about six thirty. I want to try to get this meeting wrapped up here, look around for any last comments. Also, to Cindy, Pete, and Phillip, if there's anything that you needed clarification on or wanted to put an interject here, I'll open it up to you as well. We'll take final comments, and then we'll see if we can wrap this up now. Phillip, anything from you?
Well, first, thanks to Cindy for working so closely with us. It's been great. And what I just wanted to convey to the board and to council is that we hear you about collaboration and looking for opportunities to share information and help each other get to a place where we feel like we're being responsive to community input and to your desires for how we treat this topic going forward. So we will begin that collaboration work, and it'll start with at least Maya working with the city manager's office to figure out what that collaborative structure can look like between our two entities. Thank you.
Thanks, Phillip.
All right. I'm not seeing any other comments. So again, commissioners and counselors, thank you guys, everybody, for being here, staff members as well for the support. Appreciate the joint meeting as always, and we will have another one coming up in the near future, as we'll plan for that one. Thank you guys very much. Rachel? All right.
Happy New Year. Take care.
Bye-bye. Take care.
Thank you, guys. Have a wonderful evening tonight. We'll see you all soon.
Ciao, y'all.
Ciao, y'all.